Well, it's 202, gentlemen, Melvin Edwards, for those of you may not know who I am, I'm the chairman of the REO Committee. I want to thank you very much for your time. I am checking to see if I have quorum and I believe that I not, yes, I do have.
Yeah, you do have it.
So if there's no objections, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Once again, I appreciate everybody's time, particularly those of you in the construction trades and that you guys are all busy. So I'm gonna, I'm going to ask respectfully of my committee members that if we adjust the agenda so that we can get these gentlemen back to their business as quick as possible. That being said, if there's no objections, I'd like to call item number four, which is a discussion with the general contractors. And so gentlemen, all of you, if you'd like to introduce yourselves individually and then we can just kind of get started. I'm gonna try to be as informal as I can. I'm sure everybody is pretty used to this new system of Zoom as opposed to us being around the table. And I don't think that I don't believe there would be any objections for us to kind of have them pretty much almost a respectful free for all, so to speak, that I've made for hand raising and things. It's a small group. And I think we're all grown men and women, so we should be able to manage this pretty well. That being said, let's see, we have Maureen. The could 109577 introduce themselves first? I just.
Sorry, that's me, Hope Button. For some reason, my video is not working and it's identified by my employee number, so.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I just didn't, I just didn't recognize your number.
Yeah, they replaced, they replaced our laptops and I haven't quite tweaked the Zoom on it yet, so. Sorry.
At least you have laptops. They only give us iPads. So, but Hope, could you start or you or Chee just kind of give us an introduction and allow for these gentlemen to introduce themselves to the, to the committee as well, please?
Um, well, we've got Frank Amaro from Daniel O'Connell and Sons, who they're the general contractor on the Brightwood Lincoln project, which is wrapping up. You know, the April 2021 numbers for that project were attached to the agenda that Maureen sent around last week, so everybody should have a copy of that. Those are the most updated figures. And again, they're relatively consistent with what we've seen over like, over say, the last five months since we've been re-meeting. With the residents coming in at just a hair under 31%, minorities almost 29%, women over 7% and self-identified veterans at over 6%. So again, all categories with the exception of Springfield residents exceeded, significantly exceeded the goals. And the residents, quite frankly, I would consider this a success story, given the circumstances, that the number of hours that this project had, which the total number of hours as of the end of April were 228,155 hours, that almost 31% of those hours were worked by Springfield residents. So Frank, I don't know if you want to, if something you want to add or Chee, if you want to pop in here about that.
Definitely. I'd like to piggyback off of the success of the project, being that it was in COVID during the COVID-19 pandemic. You had people who were workers, a labor force who's actually making more money not working in some respects than actually working. So I think the 31%, the 30.75% would have definitely been 35% or even higher save the COVID-19 pandemic and the mitigating situation surrounding it. So I think, not do I think, I know that the project was a success. We went over 50% over the target. It's a number for minorities and exceeded the goals in the other areas as well. And again, during a pandemic with work stoppages, with having to shut down the site, with a lack of a workforce in certain areas sometimes. So considering all the variables, a great job was done. I'd like to commend Daniel O'Connell and Sons. Frank Amaro did a great job as far as diving in with both feet, again with his field administrator, Wendy Santiago as well. We picked up our process and system from UMass Design Construction and Compliance Working Group, which was suggested to us by Lisa Clausen. So thank you very much, Lisa, for giving us that resource because that resource was invaluable in us building out our compliance department and our systems moving forward. Frank and Wendy jumped in with both feet. Frank attended UMass Design Construction Compliance Working Groups with us. He attended the Policy Group on Trade Women Issues as well. He intended the Mass Gaming Commission's Best Practices for Diversity in Construction Industry Seminar. So we developed this process together. We had subs onsite, subcontractors onsite before the work started. We wanted to know what their, how they were going to meet their goals. We wanted to get their plans on how they were going to meet their goals and move forward in that respect. We had corrective action meetings with those who weren't meeting their goals to see how they would get back on track to be able to do so. We only had to have two such meetings. We only had to send one reprimand letter concerning the project. So not only was the compliance unit and the Daniel O'Connell and Sons did well, but the subcontractors stepped up and they were amenable to the process. And there was very few, it was very little pushback as far as meeting the numbers and as far as the process was concerned. So I'll let Frank chime in, but Frank and Wendy did an incredible job. And it was a great collaboration and partnership and the, and the project was a success.
My name is Frank Amaro. I'm from Daniel O'Connell Sons, as you know. I am the HR/EEO officer here. And I've been doing this. I actually started, it's funny, I say I went full circle because I started in this field in 1982 as a placement specialist for an agency called Third World Jobs Clearinghouse in Springfield under the, the wing of the great James Hennessy, who, who used to, I see Edward smile. Do you remember him, Edward? Melvin? Yeah, James Hennessy, who was a hell of a man. And it was Third World Jobs Clearinghouse, and I will put women and minorities into construction field. The first thing I want to say, and the biggest thing I think I want to say today, is that Springfield should be tooting its horn. Springfield has brought this to a new level and has really set the field from now on. My, my most gratitude to Chee and, and you know, he, he was very instrumental, you know, to, to the success of this because between him and Hope, with Hope giving us all the support we needed, we jumped into this and we did not want this project to be business as usual. You know, you just send your maximum effort form, they go to the union, they state, okay, we don't have any women or we don't have anyone in this position, and that's it. One, one of the most innovative things that we did was build an alliance team. That alliance team consisted of Mass Hire, the Regional Employment Board, apprenticeship programs like Community Work. And what we did differently in this project, which I believe you set the standards, Springfield has set the standard, is that we brought subs in before they came on, on the site to do their jobs. And the difference was they're always thinking about the work, work and what they have to complete. And the whole time during this, this contract, we kept the goals in front of them. And what we did is if, if they, we send out the Rio letter, if something came back that we see that they were not going to make their goals, instead of slapping their hand, we actually invited them in for we could strategize and see what we can do to, to, to help them meet their goals. In some cases, they moved minority and women from another project to our project, you know. And I'll give you an example of sub stated, I only have two women on the payrolls. Well, you need at least one over here. Could you move them over here? I have to agree with Chee 110%. We did this through a pandemic. We did this through shutdown. We did this through people getting more money and unemployment. Some of, I believe, the reason we did not make the goal 100% for the residents was a lot of specialized subs came in, a lot of specialized to do certain work that we just don't have those, 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 those jobs here. You know, it's, it's very hard to fulfill a position when, when that profession is not in town. But I think that right now, I feel very proud to be part of this. I feel very proud to be a Springfield resident and to work with the city of Springfield. I think each and every one person that has to do, the numbers that, that, that were set for this project were very high numbers. I think there's not too many cities or too many municipalities that would even dare put those numbers. And you guys took the, the, the rein, you know, the bull by the horns, and you set those numbers and we exceeded those numbers. Those were, every time we sat down with some subs and told them what were the goals, oh my God, those, those are high goals. Yes, they were high goals, but you exceeded everything except the resident and you did this through a pandemic. And I take my hat off to each and every one of you. And when I first met Chee and we sat down to talk about this, this thing, his commitment was as big as mine's to really make this work, to put our community, our people and, and have people find jobs that they could support their families, good jobs, and they could take pride on what the city of Springfield is building in the city of Springfield. And I just want to say to every single one on this, on this call, and for the people who are not here, you should feel very proud of yourself. The city of Springfield has raised the bar.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you. Tim, I see you mouthing, so you want to jump in here, Tim?
Yeah, I just want to thank Frank. I'm Tim Allen. I'm on this committee and I'm on the City Council in Springfield. We've been working, Melvin's worked the longest on this, but I've been on it five or six years and it's great to hear your, I'd like to hear more about exactly what we did that was great, but you know, from Chee and stuff, but that's a great endorsement. Thank you for your kind words.
Yeah, thank you. One of the biggest things we did was build an alliance. When, when, when me and Chee got together, we, we came up with a plan. The plan was to have an alliance where if, if we needed to help these subs, we had people that could help us. I knew, I knew the community, so, so did Chee. When, when someone wasn't doing something, we would call them, we would give them an opportunity, more as a support group. But mo-most of the times, in, in my past experience, you know, you send the Rio letter, you're not doing this, you're not doing this. You're failing on your goals and that's it. We actually tried to help them reach those goals and, and, and look for different avenues and strategize on what could we do to help you reach these goals? And, and I, and I think that was the difference. I think that was the difference.
I can agree. I agree with that.
Fiore, you see your hand is up?
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody. So I just want to educate people on a couple of different points. So on Frank's point of those numbers seeming high, those numbers have been on both project labor agreements and in community standards for around, I don't know, 15 years all day long. So those numbers have always been in place. And one of the other things to kind of point out is up at UMass, they are meeting their numbers even in the pandemic as, and as well as exceeding them. Anywhere that we've ever had a project labor agreement, we've exceeded the numbers that have been on. I mean, you guys did a great job. I'm not going to sit here and say you didn't, but I believe even with the, even with the pandemic, the other numbers were met and we could have and should have met them. The difference is, you pointed out there were specialty contractors. Well, again, it's, it's the decision of the general contractors to pick the right contractor that can supply those numbers going into the project. And that's the way the project has been looked at it from day one is who are we picking and can you meet it? And if they tell you they're going to have trouble, then they should be reconsidered and not pick to do those projects. So it's just something to think about going forward with contractors that you bring on or you allow to be brought on. If they're telling you they're going to have trouble, they better have a solid plan because again, we're not going to meet these numbers. You only get right on three, but I really truly believe we could have met the fourth one. I had two contractors there. I never got a call up until the very end of supplying a resident or any other classification from the contractors that I had there, so.
That's actually not true.
No, hold on. That's funny you say that. Give me a second, Chee. That's funny you say that because you're right, those numbers have been around. But although those numbers have been around for a long time, they have not been met in every single project. The other thing is one of your own subs were one of the ones that did not meet those goals and we contacted them. Whether you knew it or not, we contacted them. So it's very funny that you say that. And, and, and I'm, I'm not going to let you rain on the parade because I really believe that what, what was done there is extraordinary in terms, and, and UMass, yeah, UMass, they've been established there for a long time. UMass have had their program for a long time. And I think for something new in Springfield, we're talking about Springfield. We're not talking about UMass or anybody else. We're talking about the city of Springfield. This is something that it should be very proud and you should be tooting your horn in Springfield. It was one of your subs that did not make, make the cut.
Frank, I am correct, if you remember correctly, it came down there, but the point is.
Exactly, at the beginning, not at the end. You came down at the beginning, not at the end.
We don't need to go back and forth, but Frank, you brought my sub in when he was 90% done with the job and the very next morning.
That's not true.
I applied criteria.
No, I disagree with that.
This has also been a law in the book for 15 years, Frank. It's not new to Springfield.
Very early. We brought your sub in, sorry, we brought your sub in very early in, 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 in the program.
You came in as well.
We brought him in very, very. That's right. If you recall, you did not come in at the end of the program because since the pandemic happened, we, we, we had to stop going there. We, we, we had to minimize how many people went in. So the pandemic's been around for almost a year and, and, and for over a year, and we brought them in very early. We brought them in very early.
Lindsay?
Through the chair, thank, thank you, Officer Edwards. Frank, thanks for being here. Frank, I just do want to say I think this project has been a success. I do appreciate your work, Chee, Hope. I really appreciate your work with the general contractors on these projects. I do hope that this is just the beginning of some really great numbers for the projects going forward. I do agree. I think this project is a success. I think it should be, you know, broadcast to as many people as we can. Maybe we didn't meet every single number, but you know what? Three out of four is a great start. I appreciate your work with the city and Chee and Hope. I appreciate everything you're doing and I look forward to doing it with more contractors as the projects move forward in the city.
Thank you very much, Lindsay. Those words being a lot to me.
And, and UMass.
And to us as a team.
And I have a question. I just want to interject real quick. Just want to interject real quick. UMass doesn't have a residency goal. There, there's no residency goal at UMass, so.
Actually, that was kind of what I was going to ask about when the, if we're falling short specifically around the specialty trades and the comparison between Springfield and UMass. Am I wrong by, well, I know if we were talking about the hiring of police officers and the need for them to live in the city of Springfield, that is always an impediment. And so also with special trades within the city departments, where lawyers and other types of people, when they make and reach a certain financial goal in their standard of living, they look at Springfield as a stepping stone out of college or a place where they live because it's affordable and they can access all the resources. But once they get it to another economic level, they move out of Springfield and they may have started here, but they move out. So if we're, my question is, is those the specialty trades, is that an issue? Because I remember when we first started, we always said, you know, how do we find a female crane operator who lives in Springfield? They don't exist. Is Amherst the area in which they're drawing from? It's not, obviously, it's not just Amherst. It's the entire area, which all around there are the areas where people move.
It's the region, especially Worcester. They get a lot of, they get a lot of people from Worcester. It is, is, is a different, you, you're not comparing apples to apples here when you say that. Because like Chee said, they don't have a residency, a, a, a resident goal. And, and they, they, it is, is the whole region that, that, that they pull from. We don't pull from that. And we were in the North End in Springfield. So to be able to do that in the North End in Springfield with, with, with all the bad publicity, I know because I, I, I moved into the city in 1977. And one of the things I love about this school and this project is I lived across the street for 20 years at 108 Orchard Street when we first came here from New York City in 1977. So what you guys put up in that neighborhood, just, just that alone is something to be commended because that neighborhood has never seen anything like that. And you're giving all those people and all those children in that neighborhood a fair chance and letting them know that there is something great and there's something more. And each one of you has something to do with that. And, and, and that speaks volumes.
Was, was, was there added cost? I mean, you know, whether, you know, I'm, I'm, everybody, accolades are deserved anytime somebody puts the effort in and they accomplish, you know, better than what is expected or at least in pointing in the right direction. But I, what I'm asking now is as the steward of the taxpayers and, and having to be responsible for how we spend the money that does come in and is never enough, and we will, as we set the tax rate, as we put the budget together, we'll hear from the other side of people complaining about that part. Is and has this created, getting these numbers, has it cost you as a general contractor or to be able, and was that written into the bid path, the big cost when you were applying for the job?
Well, in, in terms of applying for the job, I cannot speak too much about that. I am the HR/EEO officer. I could honestly tell you that that was one of the biggest commitments that we had, that we were going to make this work. And they don't bring me in in all, in all our projects. And this is one project that they, they called me in the office and they wanted me involved in this from the beginning. So in terms of the cost, I will be talking out of school, if you will, in, in terms of that. That's not my forte. I'm, I'm HR and, and I'm the equal opportunity employer officer, but I think that I, I haven't heard anything about that. I haven't heard, they were committed to making this right. They were committed to doing the right thing. And, and it's something that Chee says all the time, this is the future. I think this is going to be the future. I think the more, you know, diversity and inclusion is a big thing now. And, and I think that we have to show that, yes, we could give people the opportunity. And, and it's not like a lot of people think that people don't want to work or people, people want to work, but they want a fair chance. They want something that they could call their own and they want something that they could supply and support their families. That, and that's, that's what we did here. And we did have a female crane operator there. I'm very proud to say, an Hispanic one, too.
Dave, I'm sorry, Frank and Dave, I'm not familiar with your titles. Could you share those with me so that I know whether or not, and, and actually which, who your, your titles.
Can I just interject real quick before you guys go? I'm sorry. Melvin, Mr. Chairman, I had them, I wanted Fontaine Brothers on the call just to glean some information as far as the Brightwood Lincoln project, how we work together and how we develop the process and system to, to meet our goals. So that's why I wanted to invite Fontaine Brothers onto the call to, one, get a glimpse of the REO Committee and how its process works and to get a glimpse of the Brightwood Lincoln project and how we perpetuated our system.
I'm going to, well, I, so Frank and Dave, you both are from Fontaine?
Correct, yes.
Okay, I, I'm going to come, I'm going to circle back to you then in a few minutes because I would like to hear your thoughts on what you've heard and what you, and how it can be duplicated by your company as well. But I see Fiore has his hand up again, so Fiore, please. Fiore?
Sorry about that. I, I was closing the screen. I was writing something. Now, basically, I just, what I just wrote was, there was made mention, and I think I asked this at the previous meeting, who was the contractor that chose to pretty much not make any effort or very little effort at all? That, what particular trade and what particular contractor was it that chose to not really abide by or participate as well as he should have in this project?
What are you asking again?
Who was the, there was made mention at a previous meeting and also earlier in this meeting that there was a contractor that chose to pretty much either not participate or very little participation at all on his behalf in reference to the REO requirements.
You want us to name the subcontractor?
Yeah, the name of the contractor is, who was that?
Fernando Masonry?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, Frank, Dave, first of all, thank you guys and I appreciate you guys being here. You do do a lot of work as, as, as well as Frank Amaro's company. Your, your comments mean a lot to me and, and I think they have a lot of value because you guys will hopefully maybe try to build on, duplicate first and then build on what Frank has been able to do over at DLC. Either one of you, could you share some comments, some thoughts and observations, please?
Sure. So first of all, my name is Frank Pear. I'm the Senior Project Manager for Fontaine Brothers. Dave Rehalte is, is another project manager that will be working alongside me. I just briefly, I grew up in Springfield all my life, born and raised, went to school with Dom Sarno, Commerce High School. Work with Chee down at the Southern Community Center. I built that down there with Mark Colton and his gang. And then my last project with the city is I did the new culinary center that provides all the lunch programs for the, the children for the city of Springfield. I have worked with Hope Buttons in the past, so I'm, I'm familiar with the REO and requirements that are needed. It was made very clear to us by Chee, by Hope, that, you know, in the past, what we're dealing with in today, real world today, is not what was real world before. They are committed to make this happen as we are committed to make it happen. And as Bud Williams said at one of the community outreach meetings, it's, it's a construction project, but it's more than that. It's a community economic development project, and that means an economic development for the, the people that live in Springfield. And we take that seriously. There's, I'm a construction guy. I'm bricks and mortar. That's my world. I've been doing it for 38 years. I know Fiore, I've seen Lisa. I worked with both of them up at UMass. I was involved with the UMass Chiller Plant, working with UMBU to, to, to meet the minority and, and women trade people requirements on a project up at UMass. So we're committed to doing this. I know how hard it is. I know how hard Frank must have had to work. Never, I was at the site last Wednesday and I had a tour with Pete Garvey and his group. And Superintendent of Schools and the school is beautiful. It's, it's such an attractive school and a great location. It's a gem for the community. We hope to do the same thing, replicate the same thing. It's totally, that's our, that's our, 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 our main objective is to do right by the city of Springfield. They have done right by Fontaine Brothers for all these years. So we're going to, we're committed to, to make this happen, Melvin.
Thank you. To the point that I, I, I'm not going to beat a horse, but could you, either one of you, either you or Dave or even Frank, speak to Fiore's concern about the, when you're asking for the subs and the subs inability to be able to initially coming into the door expecting to have a problem? Can you, is that appropriate to ask?
Yeah, sure. No, I, I, there's some validity to that. And from my perspective, you get the guys that end up on a job and, and the guys that are there from pretty much jump street to the end, you have the concrete guys. You have the drywall guys. You have the electricians, the plumbing guys and HVAC guys. But the guys that come in that are specialty trades, and I'm just picking things out of, out of the air, you have the guys that install the gym equipment. They're there for three days. You have the guys that install the gym equipment. They're there for three days. Or the, uh, just trying to think, some, some specialty items where they have, it's a select group. A lot of times they're coming from Timbuktu, they're not local people. And there's only so many of them that are out there. Um, elevators is another. Example of that, you know, there's, there's only so many elevator companies. It's hard to get them to even bid on the projects half the time. Uh, we ask them to provide qualifications of, cause it's a filed trade bid. And nine out of ten times you don't get three elevator contractors to bid on a project. You have to go out after. So that's where, you know, just getting the right people that know how to do the specialty trades. You don't have the pool like you have like with drywall guys and brick layers and, and things like that, but. Um, but we'll, we, we've worked with most of them. I've been doing this, like you said, thirty eight years. I know most of the players. I know the owners of the companies. Um, we're gonna be ahead of it, not chasing it. I think that Frank's point was right on cue. You gotta go from Jump Street and, um, be ahead of it, not chasing them after the fact. You gotta sit down with them before they put people on site, know what their expectations are. And, uh, and then just follow through and make sure that it happens.
Good, thank you. Um, Dave, did you wanna share anything?
I mean, I guess for me, uh, just to add on to Frank's, I've, I'm relatively new with Fontaine Brothers, but, uh, my previous career experiences with Consigli construction. Um, I have experience working with Umba as well at UMass with compliance officers. They do, uh, also Yale University does something very similar. For New Haven residents and such, just making sure we maintain percentages. Uh, I currently live in East Forest Park in Springfield as well, so I'm a Springfield resident, so I'm, I'm just excited to, uh, you know, be able to. Contribute back to this area a little bit rather than working down in Connecticut like I have been for so many years.
Well, well, welcome home, we think.
Yeah, that's right. I appreciate it.
Um, if I'm going to, uh, at this point, um, I really appreciate you guys' time and I wanna get you off here. And then back to your regular paying jobs as quickly as possible. So if there's no objections, I'd like to open it up to comments because I see. For guests, we have, uh, Lisa Clausen and Charlie Payne. We usually have a, a, a portion where we take public comment. And if any of the comments are directed to you, you need a contractor, see, I think this probably be the best time to get him in before we go back to the. Acceptance of the minutes and the review of the ongoing projects. Um, but, um, is that, is there any objection to doing that? And just kind of bouncing things around some. Yeah, excuse me?
No objection.
Okay, well, that being said, uh, Lisa, uh, or, uh, would you like to, you know, do you have something that they need to hear? Or, or a question related to, you know, what's going on that needs to be a part of this meeting?
I just, we appreciate the, um, uh, the enforcement and follow-up work that the committee is doing. And, um, the work the contractors, uh, construction managers have done and are planning to do with the new project to. Meet these diversity and residency goals. They're, they're really important as has already been said on creating, uh, making sure that economic development is. Community development and, and we're excited to work alongside, um, Fontaine Brothers, um, in terms of the carpentry work. Um, and appreciate working with Dan O'Connell and so on.
Charlie?
Yeah, I'd like to actually, um, point out that, uh, the, one of the best things that I've found, um. Was, uh, the project executive would call me and confirm, uh, before, before somebody started on the job. A couple of weeks ahead of time saying, okay, we're gonna start concrete. Has the contractor reached out to you? Uh, to talk to you about a plan on how they're gonna go forward if they need people and, um. And, uh, they would confirm that O'Connell did a good job of getting people to reach out to me to a plan beforehand. Um, I mean, really the most exceptional company was N E I S. That did a lot of finish work down there. They called me two months at a time. They interviewed people, they got the, they, they were able to pick and choose the people they wanted to fit the role and still be very. Um, efficient on the job. Uh, Nor'easter did a good job when they came in. Marguerite and P D C, they, and D O C themselves. Um, and they, they called, uh, they spoke to me regularly throughout the process. And if there was any issues, um, uh, we were, it, it was, they called and confirmed and, and we came up with a plan. And I will tell you that one of the toughest areas that I found, um, was to supply veterans. And part of the problem, and we're putting it out to all our members, said every meeting is please let us know if you're a veteran. Um, not everybody I did, I was on the, like I said before, I was on the casino and they said, hey, we have no veterans. And I said, well, I'm a veteran. And so you should have put on your paperwork so we could attract you. So, uh, people just tend to skip over that. But O'Connell was very proactive and I appreciate the effort. Um, they, they did the right thing in a tough time. And, uh, some of the areas where we might have fallen short, uh, we, we had issues this year with daycare. And to be honest with you, we're trying to open these, uh, the doors for, uh, women to get into construction. And daycare, that women get hard, hit harder with daycare than men. Simple as that. And I think they did a great job.
Is anybody, uh, does anybody else have anything they wanna add before I, uh, and do, uh, we do. I'm just to the committee, do we need these gentlemen for the rest of the agenda we have before us?
I, I just wanted to, to jump in there for a second if I could, counselor?
Please.
And, and I just wanna say to Charlie, uh, I really appreciate those comments about the daycare issue for women in, in the trades. Um, we were all looking at the pandemic kind of as a, uh, an over, sort of an umbrella type of situation. But to, for this project to have over seven percent of women on the project. During a time when clearly schooling and daycare were a major issue. Um, I think that, that, that speaks volumes to the effort that was put in. And I will echo, uh, Frank Amaro's comments and encourage, um. This committee to share with the city council as a whole and the, and the residents of Springfield. That, um, this project employed this many residents, minorities, women and veterans. Uh, on it during this time. Um, so that, that's all I wanna add, but I do, Charlie, I do appreciate you, you. Uh, pointing that out, uh, so that that can sort of be brought to the forefront that that was an exceptional issue. And everybody that's been on this committee and Lisa, you've been attending these meetings for as long as I have. Um, you know, one of the big pushes, what, and I know it's, it's your life's work is getting women into the trades. And when you get a double, double whammy like a pandemic and then schools are closed. Kids are learning remotely or if they're younger kids, they don't have daycare or they can't go spend the day with grandma because. You know, she's in a bubble somewhere, something. Um, I just, I just think that that speaks even louder to the success of this project.
Thank you, Hope.
I appreciate that, Hope.
Frank, did you want to close this out?
Yeah, I would, I would just like to say, cause I, I see her, didn't I see her before? I, I wanna send a special thank you to Lisa Clausen and, uh, Central Western Group of, of Grace Women. They have done a great job. They keep us on our toes. Um, they were very instrumental. She, she, her and her group have been awesome. Um, like Shay stated, we went up to UMass and, and we, we, I, I wasn't able to go to a lot of the meetings after that. Because with, with, with these issues here and, uh, but I, I just wanna thank you Lisa and your group and, and you guys were very instrumental in helping us. Do what we, what we wanted to do. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Frank.
I have to piggyback on that. Um, I definitely have to piggyback on that because when I first started here, uh, Lisa and Jason pulled me aside. And actually had a conversation with me over at Palazzo and let me know about the resources and the access. And that was instrumental in us, uh, Hope and I, uh, the information that they gave us and the resources that they gave us access to. And building the, uh, compliance unit and, um, the projects that we started working on using those systems and those processes. So thank you, Lisa.
It sounds like everybody loves Lisa and I'll echo that as well. We appreciate how hard she worked and we got some love for you too, Charlie.
I realize.
But, uh, and so, look, gentlemen, uh, if, if, um, if there's no objections, I, I just like to personally thank you all for being here. And taking the time out and, um, you know, D L C, Frank, to please share with your bosses. In, in your corporate structure, how much we appreciate your work and we, we'd like to see it improved, obviously. There's, I can't, I, none of us expect perfection. But as long as we're moving in the right direction, I think we should have something all to be, uh, hopeful for. And, you know, I took some notes down and I hope everybody took note of it, uh, and particularly at Fontaine, um. The, you know, the thing is, is the fact that it was, uh, when there was or saw it was. When it looked like there might be a problem, the fact that there was outreach and communication, sounds like that's, that's a good way for it to be going. And I appreciate that as well. So that being said, um, thank you, gentlemen, and, uh, may you all and your families be safe. I'm both all out. Um, and of course, we all want you to prosper as well, but please be safe, be healthy and thank you.
Thank you. Good, good luck to Fontaine too.
Yeah, congratulations, guys.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Thanks, Dave.
Great job.
See you guys.
I got a robocall from, um. Somebody that's running for city council, Tim. So I don't know who it was because couldn't hear, well, but anyway. Um, we do still have quorum and if, if I, I would like if one of you could, um, make a motion, accept the minutes from the previous meeting. And then also second, motion has been made. Do I hear a second? That would be Lindsey. Lindsey? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. I believe the review for the, um, discussion, general contract. Speak out, acceptance of the minutes. Um, you, we've all, we're sending a copy of the, of the numbers from last week's. Um, project numbers. Are there any questions or comments related to that? Hearing none. Um, just everybody, please be aware, when Maureen, uh, is putting the agenda together, it has to be done. Usually by that, that Thursday before the next scheduled meeting. Um, we are meeting with the third Tuesday of the month. So, uh, if anybody has any agenda items they'd like to have on that, please let her know in plenty of time. Um. So that she can get it into the minute track, schedule the meeting and, and these meetings also have to be scheduled to focus Springfield. Uh, we'd like to thank, uh, Focus Springfield and pay particular homage to Brendan. Uh, for his, uh, award, uh, being recognized by, um, the, for being under forty years old. And, uh, a rising star in the city of Springfield. So, um, we, um, we appreciate, we're very proud of him. And, um, at some point, probably in the fall, we're actually gonna be in Rome with them again in City Hall. So we'll look forward to that as well. Uh, is there any other comments, questions, concerns, observations? Or complaints that we should address at this point as we come to a close and?
I'm not. So I'd like to say something, counselor?
Please, Charlie, go ahead.
So I know this isn't, it isn't in our purview, uh, in this committee or your, the committee's purview. But something that I'd like to point out and just for everybody to keep in their mind is, um, the best. Equity of inclusion can be from a local hire, local contractor. Because, you know, we get somebody who comes from Boston or New York or Connecticut or wherever and they, and we force them to hire somebody. Uh, here, meet these requirements. It, it, it's good. It's a job, but it isn't a career. And when we hire like a Fontaine Brothers or a D O C and they put someone to work, they, they make them part of their crew. They're both based right, you know, uh, in, in the Pioneer Valley. So that's a career. Someone will go to the next job with them. As opposed to this, a one-term, uh, job and, uh, as much as we can legally try to hire local companies. That's, that's as important to making a real, real equitable inclusion as opposed to just producing a, a job for six months. For somebody, keep that, you know, I'd just like everybody to think about that when, um, uh, when we're talking about these companies. Local companies are more likely to invest in Springfield people.
Well, Charlie, I agree with you a hundred and ten percent. And in fact, uh, I've spent a lot of energy lately, uh, doing on work around. Um, particularly with minority contractors, uh, in the Springfield area, Springfield-based contractors. I, I know they have a comfort level of who they will hire and hire in their neighbors. It's not, uh, you know. It, it's in their wheelhouse and to their benefit to hire their neighbors and friends and family. So I get it. Um, it's been more difficult than I think it should be. Che can echo this, I'm pretty sure, cause he, he, he's hearing from the same people. We got multiple organizations that are trying to get minority contractors or still people in the labor force. Who can pull their resources so that they can qualify, uh, to be a bidder, uh, and to get on the list and to be a sub. And then work their way up. So, um, I mean, we, we get it and we understand and we know the value of it. It's just certainly much more hard than I would have liked for it to be. Um, but that being said, I saw Tim had his hand up first, no disrespect to Lindsey, but you know, we're equal. Opportunity abuser, so we won't be sexist and say, uh, we're gonna ask Lindsey first, but Tim, uh, your hand was up. Would you like to comment first?
Yeah, well, um, am I, uh, am I muted or not?
No, you're right. We're okay here.
Right, uh, yeah, it was just, um, now that we've got a, a little good, you know, good news here on this first project. The Brightwood Lincoln Project, um, and we're hoping to carry it over. I think it was great to have, um. Is it Fontaine Brothers? They have the contract for the Mason Square School. Um, is there anything else we should be doing besides this? This was great, great progress to see over the years of trying to get to this point. And then build a little track record for how to do it right. Uh, is there anything else? This was really an open-ended question. Is there anything else we should be doing? Jay and Hope, is there anything we should be doing to help you, et cetera? Seems like you got some good momentum and things are going, going well. Should we present, you know, some, we talked about a month or two about. Presenting at the ci- at the city council at some point and, um, you know, besides what Melvin and sometimes I, uh. Do, given the committee report, um, so just an open-ended question of, and the other part of it is what other projects are about to start besides? Um, the home or the Berry School. Uh, are there any others that are, that you're keeping an eye on right now, Shay? Shay and Hope?
Um, so we have some boiler projects coming up for, uh, local schools. Um, that's gonna be starting to, on this school in the, uh, mid, uh, June. Um, at, uh, Sumner Ave School, um, Indian Orchard. And Frederick Harris, I believe. Um, those three schools will be, uh, boiler replaced. Um, that's an REO project that will be coming up, obviously, uh, uh, the Berry. Um, we have, uh, some parks coming up, I believe. Um, Hope, if I'm missing anything, definitely chime in.
No, I think that, I think the boilers, um, and, and again, I think I mentioned at the last week, uh, last month's meeting that, um. As, as they, as they were bid, only one of the boiler projects is an REO project based on the dollar amount of the con- contract. But the other two has the potential, you know, assuming there might be a change order or something else. To, um, become REO projects if, if the price increases slightly. Uh, due to, due to change orders or what have you. So when we did the pre-con meetings. Um, with those, there's two contractors, one contractor has two schools, the other has one. Um, when we did the pre-con meetings with them, um, we, we stressed to the two that. That at this point are below the REO, uh, cutoff, that they should be trying to reach those goals as well.
Correct.
In case something happens and the amount goes up over that threshold. Um, so that they're not, you know, three quarters of the way through a project and then all of a sudden saying, oh, gee, I guess I've gotta consider the REO. So we're treating them as REO projects, but two out of the three may not fall within that purview. Um, but we've stressed with them, um, the need to take it seriously. These are much smaller projects. These are, these are projects that are gonna be done over the summer. Like from the time school ends to when it starts again in the fall. So, um, we're not gonna have the, you know, the, the two years or what have you, eighteen months, two years that. Brightwood Lincoln had, um, you know, it's a get in, get it done, get out. Brightwood Lincoln had. You know, it's a get in, get it done, get out kind of thing. But, but Che and I are on top of those and we're working with those.
Yeah, in, in each project only has about five or six people that are gonna be on each project as far as the labor forces are concerned.
Yeah, okay.
And, and to answer your other question, Counselor, is that we are actually, Frank Amaro, I hope, and Wendy Santiago there, Daniel O'Connell's son, field administrator, are actually just going through the project as a whole and then just trying to figure out if there's any places that we can fine tune or do better. And so I can get back to you with what, you know, synopsis of what we come up with, but we're actually in the process of that right now.
That's great. That's great.
Can we include that as a agenda item? Maureen, as they just described, and hopefully it, it, within a month's time, he's prepared to give us a report on those action items. That would be greatly appreciated. Okay, Lindsey, did you want to say something before we?
Yeah, no, I was just, I was gonna respond to Counselor Edwards, what you and Charlie were both saying about trying to get local general contractors in for the most part for these projects. I totally agree. We just have to keep in mind, obviously, state procurement law, which requires us to award the contract to the lowest the lowest bidder, obviously qualified bidder. So I just think it's important, like you said, to continue the education. How do you ensure you're able to work on these contracts? How do your, how do you get the notification about potentially these, first of all, either these contractor, contracts being o, open? Or how do we get notifications to the awarded contractors for possibly areas that they can use to hire in the areas we want them to hire? So I think, I think part of the answer is just continue to open communication, education. I know we've talked about it the past few meetings and I think that we're taking tribes towards that, but I just wanna, I just wanted to say that I totally agree. And I think that that is part of the answer is just what we're trying to do now, talking about education and communication and stuff.
Well, Lindsey, to that point, a couple of months ago, President Williams and myself, we met with Dom and TJ, I believe Tim Shan, I'm not sure if TJ was it or I believe he may have been. But we, we did make an inquiry as to possibility of the city investing some CDBG or home funding or some other type of funding to hire somebody to be able to help mentor and facilitate local investment in the construction trades around contracting by minorities and women and that we thought would be very beneficial. I haven't heard anything else about that. If you could check into that, just give me an update. That'd be great.
I will. Yep, I will.
And if there's no, you know, it's about to, almost, we've been here almost an hour and just like when we were in the room, like they have the meeting not extend beyond an hour. So is anything that, suggestions for what might be on the committee, obviously, to Maureen, we would want to have whether, an update on any ongoing projects. Chase is gonna give us a report on that. But please, ladies and gentlemen, do not hesitate to get to Maureen with any suggestions on what the next scheduled meeting, which will be the third Tuesday in June, unless for some reason we can't get quorum. But please respond to her when she sends out the emails. And I want to personally thank Maureen for the extra work that she's doing in order to support this committee as well. You're an important part of what we do. And so if that, that being said, does if, does anybody else have anything to offer, share at this point before I entertain a motion to adjourn? Hearing none. Everybody, thank you once again for being here. Please keep yourselves and your families safe. The pandemic is real and regardless of the pandemic, it's been a sad weekend and a sad couple of weeks lately. So it doesn't matter what we pass from or what type of illnesses or things that we have to deal with. It's, it's still sad regardless of, you know, what, what the source of it is. So everybody, please do the best that you can to stay healthy and live every day joyously. So take care and thank you, everyone.